Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. It is 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mahia. To my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus, Commissioner Rachel Grant, participating through Zoom. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. For the open sessions of today's work session, written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. If received on that timeframe, action may be taken at this meeting. We have several items to cover in a work session this morning. The first up is an appeal hearing of a hearing examiner's decision, and so we are going to turn to that matter. So, opening up this session, I'm Commissioner Ty Mensah. I will be presiding over today's appeal. Here with me today, I already introduced the board. Just for the record, today's date is March 19th, 2025. The time is 9:07. Thurston County Board of County Commissioners is now on the record in an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision dated January 17, 2025. The appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025 by Scott B. Gustafson and Burton T. Miller. This appeal pertains to the hearing examiner's approval of a reasonable use exception and shoreline variance to allow construction of a single-family residence 50 feet from the ordinary high-water mark of Puget Sound. The applicant is landowner Chad Champagne. The subject property is located at 9934 Point View Street, Northeast Olympia, Washington, and comprises three undeveloped platted shoreline lots, known as lots 5C, 6C, and 7C, in the original plat for Johnson Point. Property is located within a marine riparian habitat area that requires a 250-foot setback from the ordinary high-water mark and is within a flood plain. The land is also designated as a conservancy environment, which restricts where structures and impervious surfaces can be constructed under Thurston County Shoreline Master Program. The hearing examiner approved the application with conditions allowing construction of a residence within 50 feet of the high-water mark as a reasonable use. The hearing examiner approved the application after applying criteria A through H pursuant to Thurston County Code 2445-030. The neighboring property owners Scott B. Gustafson and Burton T. Miller are now appealing the hearing examiner's decision to the Board of County Commissioners. Appellants are requesting reversal of the examiner's decision and denial of the reasonable use exception, or in the alternative, a remand back to the hearing examiner for further review. This is a closed-record appeal, meaning the Board's review of facts is limited to evidence presented to the examiner. The Board reviews questions of law de novo, engaging in the same inquiry as the hearing examiner. The issue before the Board today is whether the evidence presented to the hearing examiner demonstrated that the applicant's application complied with the relevant county land use regulations, most notably the reasonable use criteria set forth in County Code 2405-030. In quasi-judicial appeals, the Board is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine codified in 4236 RCW. Under this doctrine, Board members are not authorized to have ex parte communications with the parties after an appeal has been filed with the Board. However, if there have been ex parte communications since the appeal was filed, or communication or relationships with any of the parties that may appear to impact their impartiality, then the substance of that communication or relationship needs to be disclosed. In addition, each Board member must be able to impartially judge the case on the facts contained in the record and the applicable law. At this time, I will ask each of the other Commissioners to make a declaration for the record. I'll start, and then I'll pass to Commissioner Klaus. "Since the appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts and record and applicable law."
"Since the appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law."
"Since the appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable to law."
"And since the appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025, I, Carolina Mahia, have not had any ex parte communication with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law."
Commissioner Grant, do you have the affirmation available?
Yes.
And the date is January 31st?
January 31st, okay. "Since the appeal was filed on January 31st, 2025, I have not had any ex parte communications with any of the parties to this appeal, and I affirm that I can fairly and impartially judge this case on the facts in the record and applicable law."
Perfect, thank you. Do any of the parties have objections or challenges for any Board member to decide the case? Okay. Appellant and the applicant each have an opportunity to present 15 minutes of oral argument. Oral argument may not present new information or evidence, but must be limited to the evidence in the record and the specific issues raised in the appellant's appeal. The appellant, who will go first, have the opportunity to reserve a portion of its 15 minutes for rebuttal argument after the applicant's 15 minutes. I understand the department will not be presenting oral argument but is available to answer questions from the Board. The Board, if it has questions, will ask them of the parties during or after argument. Do any of the parties have any questions before we begin oral argument? Okay. Hearing is now open. I think that's where I bang the hammer. And we have 15 minutes for the appellant to present, and I'm looking to the clerk before we get going. Will that be managed on the wall clock? Okay, perfect.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Yep.
Is this working, or does it?
Yes, you're good.
It is, okay, thank you. I'm Richard Aramburu. I'm the attorney representing the appellant, Scott Gustafson and Bert Miller. Both of them are attending virtually today, as are other members of the community. I'd like to take 10 minutes for my opening statements and reserve five, if I may. Thank you. I know the Commissioners have read the materials that have been presented here, and so I won't be going back over them. My purpose of being here today is really twofold. Number one, to answer any questions you may have regarding our position, regarding the facts of the case, and that kind of thing. Secondly, I'm going to be highlighting what we believe to be the important issues for the Board's decision. Our fundamental request is that the Board deny the reasonable use exception. And as was noted in the beginning, the Board reviews this matter de novo. It does not give deference to the hearing examiner's decision. The appeal concerns a unique and extremely valuable property on Johnson Point in northern Thurston County. I want to start with some basics. First of all, the property. The property is a 1.84-acre property, which meets the minimum zoning requirements, but that property only allows a single, one single-family house. The house is improved with a 13,000-square-foot mansion. It has four bedrooms, five baths, four fireplaces. The Thurston County assessor assesses the property at nearly $6 million. The proposal before you is to build a 3,800-square-foot new residence on the northerly part of the property, two-story property, and it will add significantly, as a shoreline property in Thurston County, to the value of the property, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million. It's hard to say. The decision is a reasonable use exception, and the RUE rulings are intended to provide property owners relief from an unconstitutional taking of their property. And there are two criteria established in Thurston County for this. The first one, which is extremely important, is that the existing zoning must deny all reasonable use of the subject property as a whole. Now, words are important here. All reasonable use, not some of it, not part of it, but all reasonable use of the property. Secondly, as a whole, it is the entire property that is the ownership of this applicant, which is Lot 42, which is 1.84 acres. So, applying these criteria of the code to this application, the RUE must be denied. It really fails to even pass the sniff test. We have a property worth $6 million. The applicant claims that he is being denied reasonable use of this extremely valuable property. It does not meet the sniff test, and part of the problem with what the hearing examiner did was that she deferred and delayed a number of really critical decisions under the code, under the Thurston County Code. First of all, there isn't a legal lot that has been created on these C lots that we talked about. There's never been a lot consolidation. That's being put off when we get around to it. A shoreline exception is this property is in the shoreline zone. It's subject to shoreline rules. Does it require a shoreline substantial development permit? That issue has been put off by the hearing examiner and the staff inappropriately. The decision about whether or not there should be a shoreline substantial development permit for this property is required at the beginning, not at the end. We wouldn't be in this process if a shoreline substantial development permit was required. We would have an entirely different process. Thirdly, there are important issues regarding the utilities for this property, and those, again, have been kicked down the road. Water and sewer, critical to any development in Thurston County, have not been resolved, and they're both subject to a great deal of dispute and debate. The drain field and septic system proposed here is substandard, according to the Health Department, but these issues are being put off. So, let's just talk about, highlight a couple of the issues that we have here. One is the awareness of the owner. When the owner purchased this property, he was fully aware of all the rules and regulations in Thurston County concerning his property. This was a 2.5 million-dollar purchase, and the owner has assembled a group of very competent, experienced people to advise on the purchase of this property. He knew what he was getting into. He knew he could not build this house on the shoreline, and he decided to buy the property anyway. We'll roll the dice and see what happens. The C lots that are the subject here are not, and have never been, a separate legal building site. They have never been separated out. We have lot consolidation in Thurston County to do that very thing, but that application hasn't even been made yet. We haven't gone through that legal process. And if we were to get into that legal process, we will find that the C lots don't meet any of the criteria for a building site, a building lot, a buildable property in the county, because they don't have fundamentals, which include water and sewer. And the lot consolidation, by the way, is a whole other separate process. Separate application, separate staff decision, open record hearing, and guess what? Another hearing, another appeal back to you, which is apparently going to come along mañana, sometime in the future. We don't know when. So, and if you accept that these C lots are a building site, it automatically makes Lot 42 into a substandard lot, because it doesn't meet the requirements of one-acre minimum lot size in its own. In addition, Lot 42 was never included by the examiner in the considerations for a conditional use permit. That property is a single ownership, owned by a single individual. It must be included as a part of the RUE, because the code says, "Consider the property as a whole," not separately, "as a whole." That's what your code says. And in addition, there is the underlying question of the illegal building that's on this property. Your code says very clearly, "No permits will be granted pursuant to this title if there exists on the property a land use violation." Well, this is a major land use violation. This applicant has built a whole house on the property without any permits, without any permits from Thurston County. This owner has hooked up to water and sewer in a bootleg fashion without approval of the county for any of these facilities. The Commissioners need to enforce the code here. The code says, "No permits if there's land use violations," and that needs to be enforced here. And we can't proceed without having utility connections decided on this property. What's going on here is that the applicant wants to start the momentum rolling. We'll do the reasonable use exception, get the momentum rolling for other county agencies, other county permits, and use a decision here as a way to push their way through that. That's not the way the system is supposed to work. So, there's no showing that there's a denial of all reasonable use by this applicant. The applicant owns a very expensive property that has significant value. The owner wants to put another 3,800-square-foot house on the property and make a few million, 3 million, 4 million, whatever it is you get for a nice waterfront house in Thurston County. Wants to go from 6 million to 8, 9, and 10 million. That's not the reason we have reasonable use exceptions in Thurston County. Enough's enough for this applicant. So, I'm right at 4:48, so unless you have some questions for me?
Questions at this juncture?
I'll be back for another 48 seconds, and we'll be here for any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Applicant is up, and...
Good morning.
You good to go?
Good morning, Commissioner Mensah, members of the Board, and it's a little bit awkward, but I'm going to my right here to make sure I also get Commissioner Grant. My name is Heather Burgess with the law firm of Dixon-Frolik Phillips Burgess, and privileged here to represent the applicant for this permit subject to the appeal, Mr. Chad Champagne. Mr. Champagne is a small-business owner and unable to join us today, but I do have with me Mr. Blake Lord, who was the engineer of record for the project, who you might have seen in the materials. I'd like to focus today on three issues, as there is considerable amount of information already before the Board and in this record and introduced to the hearing examiner, and they actually happen to align fairly closely with what Mr. Aramburu just articulated in his argument. But I'd like to start with first is Mr. Champagne's ownership of the adjacent property. Much of this, in fact, all of the argument that you will see in this appeal, that you've seen in writing, that you've heard today, really focuses on Mr. Champagne's ownership of the original Lot 42, containing the existing home. We do not dispute that Mr. Champagne owns this home. However, for the purposes of the reasonable use exception before the hearing examiner, and now before this Board, the fact that the applicant owns this home, even if it is a large one, even if it is a mansion on an adjacent legal parcel, is simply irrelevant. This is because, as a fundamental legal matter, a tax parcel, this is one tax parcel comprising all these lots, is not the same as a legal lot. And what we have here is a tax parcel consisting of at least two legally non-conforming lots. Lot 42, which is now known as BLA, Lot A or Alpha, containing the applicant's existing residence, outbuilding, septic system. And then we have lots 5C to 7C, which make up the tip of Johnson Point, which is the site of the proposed new residence. The land use applications subject to the examiner's decision concern the original platted lots 5C to 7C, which Thurston County has in fact recognized as a legal lot of record separate from Lot 42 since at least April 6th of 1992, as discussed on pages 15 to 16 of our materials. The applicant's, or excuse me, the appellants extended discussion in their briefing of what may or may not have been reflected in the earlier BLA, conspicuously omit discussion of the evidence in the record at Attachment D, as in Delta, to Exhibit 1, which reflects the county's earlier, and I'm going to hold this up here just to show you the page I'm talking about, because that's a multi-page exhibit, reflecting the county's earlier 1992 determination that the subject property consists of three lots. Parcels 5C to 7C, making up a single lot, which was acknowledged at the time to be not buildable due to septic limitations, which this applicant proposes to address by connection on the adjacent parcel; the currently developed lot, containing the old mansion; and a third lot, making up the lighthouse lot at the tip of the point, that you might also have seen discussed in the examiner's decisions. Those determinations were made in 1992, were not challenged, and the underlying codes upon which they rested have not changed. At the end of the day, the fact that the applicant owns multiple individual properties within the same subdivision or area is irrelevant to the applicant's reasonable use of this parcel. The appellant cites no authority for the proposition that the applicant is required to merge or consolidate his individually-recognized properties that he owns as a precondition to reasonable use, nor that the application need consider the common ownership of other previously-recognized legal adjacent lots. The second issue I'd like to turn to is this discussion about the shoreline exemption. The appellant spent considerable time in their briefing asserting that the examiner erred in failing to also require approval of a shoreline exemption as a condition of the reasonable use exception. In fact, on Page 7 of their brief, they go so far as to assert that it is, quote, "evident that the applicant wants to defer application of the SMA in hopes that the momentum of an RUE and other procedures will allow him to escape the obvious requirements of the Shoreline Management Act." This accusation is not only offensive, it is patently false and contradicted by the record. Indeed, rather than try to avoid such a determination, as reflected in Finding Number 24 of the examiner's decision, the applicant actually asked that the examiner consider the shoreline exemption as part of this application, and she denied, or she declined that opportunity, concluding that it was not properly before her at the time, and that she lacked the evidence necessary to support the findings required to reach that exemption. We do not dispute that the applicant requires either a shoreline exemption or a shoreline substantial development permit before a building permit can issue for construction of this home, but the same project requires approval of this RUE in order to comply with critical area regulations. In my experience, it is not uncommon for applicants whose proposed use requires approval of a reasonable use exception, which is a burdensome and lengthy process, to seek that approval first and then pursue other required permits, which require more detailed plans and specifications, as there would be no point in investing in that step if the proposed use is not in fact authorized. I also note that the only authority cited for the proposition that the shoreline exemption must issue now, on Page 7 of their brief, refers to snowballing. I think that was mentioned by Mr. Aramburu as well. That is a SEPA-based argument, and the case cited for that proposition, International Longshore versus City of Seattle, expressly discusses SEPA and not shoreline exemptions. The third point I'd like to turn to is the argument regarding denial of the reasonable use exception because Mr. Champagne should have been aware of existing critical area regulations at the time he purchased the property. This is, other than the lot issue, the heart of the appellant's argument. In some version of it, it's, "My client cannot have a reasonable use exception approved because he should have been aware of the multiple restrictions limiting the use of the property at the time of its purchase, and thus cannot seek, quote-unquote, 'special treatment.'" We are not seeking any special treatment here. We're seeking what your code allows. And the primary case that's cited for this proposition, Buishel versus Department of Ecology, is distinguishable in multiple respects, as discussed and detailed on Pages 9 to 14 of our materials. Of those distinguishing factors, the most important is that unlike in Buishel, there is no evidence in the record that other surrounding properties in the immediate vicinity of Mr. Champagne's are used solely for recreational purposes, such as for docks, floats, boat home, you know, other typical recreational uses. Rather, in the Johnson Point area, all the properties in the immediate vicinity are almost uniformly developed with single-family residences. That is how the hearing examiner determined the single-family use proposed to be reasonable, and it's appropriate, because everything around it is a single-family home. and it's appropriate, because everything around it is a single-family home. On page nine of their briefing, the appellants also cite, but do not discuss, a 1976 Washington Supreme Court decision, Lewis versus City of Medina, and cite it for the same proposition, basically that the owner of a property cannot seek special exceptions and privilege from zoning and land use limitations, which should have been apparent at the time of purchase. However, that case, which is now, shockingly, nearly 50 years old, and does not involve application of critical area regulation, but instead a variance from zoning regulations because the lot did not meet minimum lot size requirements. A variance to zoning regulations, unlike a reasonable use exception under the critical area ordinance, requires a finding that the property owner is not being granted a special privilege. In Medina, the property owners had participated in an earlier sale of the property, which resulted in the creation of a substandard lot. So the court correctly concluded that special circumstances were created by their own actions. Here, that is not the case. Mr. Champagne has done nothing to change or modify the existing lots as he purchased them. The case simply doesn't stand for the broad proposition that it's cited for. Finally, taken to its logical conclusion, the appellant's caveat emptor-based argument about county regulations, which is, you know, would follow that an RUE cannot be granted if the regulations existed at the time of the property owner's purchase, which preclude the intended use, would effectively deny a reasonable use exception under your Code 2445-030 for any property owner deprived of reasonable use by the critical area ordinance who acquired their property after, let's say, 2012, when your most robust protections were adopted. That is not how the county has ever, or should, interpret its reasonable use exceptions. There is no criteria which looks at what the code was at the time and precludes subsequent purchasers from availing themselves of reasonable use provisions. The last argument that the appellants raised had to do with the alleged illegal building on the property. That's addressed in some detail on pages 19 to 20 of our brief, and at the end of the day involved conversion of an existing greenhouse on Lot 42, which is not where the parcel, where this particular application is proposed, and has been subject to a later filed building permit application, which is pending approval at Thurston County. Here, the applicant spent several years creating a robust record before the hearing examiner, which resulted in the issuance of a thoughtful decision approving the reasonable use exception subject to multiple conditions of approval. To accept the appellant's arguments would be to graft additional criteria onto what your code specifically requires. The decision as issued is fully consistent with the law, and we respectfully request that the board deny the appeal in its entirety and affirm the examiner's decision. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Questions from the board?
I have one.
Sure.
So on the buyer beware question, you know, there's different types of arguments made. At the beginning, you know, you were talking about, it sounded like more like you were distinguishing this case, because, hey, there's homes around here, and I think in the record there was some mention of a 1990s application that was granted, and that would have led the buyer to think that there was a path forward.
Correct.
But then you kind of, then you kind of moved to an argument of like, there's no basis for this, it would preclude any RUE, like, it's not, so I guess my question is, is it, what's the state of the law here? Like, is it ever appropriate to apply that type of an argument? Is there authority saying you can't use that kind of argument? Is there, is it an open question to some degree, and you're arguing that you shouldn't ever consider that, but is there authority to say that this argument has validity in some cases, maybe not this case? Still kind of murky about that.
Certainly, and it's an interesting area of the law. If you look at the Bucial case, which is the primary authority that's cited for this, it involved a shoreline variance, and it didn't involve a reasonable use exception. The reason that you see cross citation of reasonable use and shoreline variance cases like this is the criteria are very similar, but not necessarily identical. There is certainly, it is certainly fair game, and if you look at the facts in Bucial, they're pretty egregious. The lot was substantially smaller, unprotected by any kind of seawall, it would have allowed routine flooding of the proposed residence. There's a lot of distinguishing factors. So what is or is not permitted under the code and what the condition of the property is is certainly a relevant consideration. But the way that the appellants have posited this argument, it's a pure caveat emptor. It's, he should have known that there are restrictions, and therefore he cannot build. If that is the case, if you know of the restrictions, you should also, in part of your due diligence, right, in protecting your reasonable investment-backed expectations that reasonable use is intended to protect, to your point, Commissioner Mensah, also consider all the other records and information available to the property, which included this prior determination. So I think it's a very, a long way of answering your question is, I think it's a very fact-specific determination, and it's not absolute one way or absolute the other. It's very fact-specific, and here it simply doesn't apply in the broad base way that they've proposed it.
Any other questions for Ms. Burgess? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the appellant's counsel has five minutes for rebuttal, and then there may be questions from the board.
Commissioner Mensah, I'll leave to do that time on my phone.
Okay, so can you give him, can you like hold up a one or something when he's at one minute?
Yes.
So you won't be able to use that, but you'll have five minutes, and clerk will give you a one-minute warning.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. I want to respond to your question first, Mr. Mensah. Caveat emptor applies. The rule of knowledge, you know what you're buying in the state of Washington, you know what you're buying, especially when you're buying a very expensive property. You assemble due diligence to determine what you can do. To allow a party to buy a property as a speculation that they may later get permits is not the way the system works. The cases, no matter how old they are, back to Lewis versus Medina and others, are still applicable today and still apply. Second question, application of the Shoreline Management Act. It's indicated, well, we don't really know what we're going to do, so we can't really apply for an exception. Well, as you know, it's a 3,810 square foot, two-story house, 50 feet from the water line. We know exactly what they want to build. There's all the information you need to seek a shoreline exemption. Does that new house require a shoreline permit or not? We're assuming, as we're all in here today, that it doesn't, because we're off on this other tangent. A shoreline permit should be required for this, and a decision needs to be made before we go through this process. The examiner made a mistake on that point. What about the sea lots? We're back to talking about some letters and correspondence and other things that went on 30-some years ago. But the truth of the matter is, for many years, Thurston County has had a requirement for lot consolidation. If you want to make, consolidate lots and make them into a new buildable lot, you go through the boundary line adjustment process. It's been that way for years. The county has memoranda and bulletins they send out to people on this point. That's the way you do it. That hasn't been done. There's just some correspondence back and forth. That doesn't count as the way the system and the code works. There must be a lot consolidation. They know that, and they've applied, they say, well, we're going to apply for one later. Well, more of the snowballing effect. The commissioner said we could do this, and now you got to give us the consolidation. That's the way it's going to work as a practical matter. You've got to count the entire property. The code says you consider a reasonable use exception based upon the property as a whole. You've got to give meaning to those words as a court word. You need to give meaning to those words. The property as a whole is Lot 42, which has been kept as a single lot by the Thurston County assessor for at least 30 years. It's not a separate lot, and you need to consider the lot as a whole. And so, by the way, at the end, there's a claim that they're being denied all reasonable use of this property. Where's, what's the damage? What's the problem? It's a $6 million property. We're going to add $2 or $3 million more to this if this reasonable use exception is applied. So in conclusion, the board needs to carefully review the record, carefully review the examiner's decision, give no deference to the examiner's decision, and conclude that no RUE should be issued for this property. And so, I'm trying to keep within my time, I think I have one minute left, and I'm not going to use it, thank you. Okay, any questions from any members of the board?
Questions for counsel? I think you're good.
Okay, okay, I'll be here if there's any further questions that need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Let's go back to... Okay, well, that concludes this appeal hearing, and the board will issue its written decision on or before April 1st, 2025. So with that, we're going to move on to the next piece of our agenda, which is actually a closed session, so we're going to have to ask you guys to, we'll give you time for a minute here, but I'll just do the advisement. We will be entering a closed session pursuant to RCW 423140, subsection 2, that portion of a meeting of a quasi-judicial body which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties, specifically appeal of the hearing examiner's decision, the Champagne RUE. 30 minutes will be estimated, extended if needed, so I will mark that time once we actually get started.
Sit down. 7:09. We're two, we'll be here until 10. Maybe you have superintendent show up or something.
...
Okay, we are, the board's back out of our closed session. It is ten thirty-three AM and we're up to our next piece of our agenda, which is item three Thurston County Superintendent's check-in. And it's kind of an open session. We have about forty-five minutes. We'll have, we have eight of our superintendents. This is really cool. So we're gonna ask for maybe three to five minutes, you know, for each superintendent, kind of give an update, what's going on in their district, challenges they're facing, you know, whatever, whatever it is you like to speak. I know a lot of times you guys piggyback on each other as you go around, because you're facing similar stuff, or you're working on a similar piece of legislation with the state, or however it works. It's really up to you, and I'll start at this end of the table.
Right. Yeah, thank you. Those who don't know me, I'm Troy Oliver, I'm superintendent of North Hurst Public Schools, and it's my first year in that role of superintendent, but I've been in the district for something twenty-eight years. I've done any number of things, starting at a middle school, assistant principal, and principal, and I've done a lot of stuff. So I feel fortunate to to still be in North Hurston and serve in that community. So we've got a lot of great things going on, North Hurston, mostly highlights on the construction side. Our community has been very supportive of us through bonds and capital levies in the last few years. If you haven't been out to River Ridge High School, lately that campus is completely transformed. We're basically building an entirely new structure on there that'll be commensurate with the same high-quality educational facilities we have at both Timberline and North Hurston High School. Kamachi Middle School is another project we've recently finished off College Street. That project added multiple classrooms to that site, so we do not have any portable classrooms on that site anymore, which is fantastic. Upgraded the gym and other common areas. And then a couple other construction-related pieces I'll mention is the Rajmont House Activity Center. It's what we call it, those who've been in the, in the community for a long time. It was the former valleys. So we're upgrading the, the south end of that facility, which will ultimately house our Ignite Family Academy, which is a homeschool family partnership program that we have in North Hurston. It's about three years old. About a hundred kids and families, K-8, enrolled in that program currently. This'll double our capacity. And we have a wait list. We already know we have about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy kids and families that that want to participate in that program going forward. So that'll be fantastic when we get that open in the fall. And then we'll also move our partnership with the Reading Foundation back to that facility, and then we'll move our, our student records and archives over there. So it'll be a multi-use facility. And then the last piece that will be occupied there is our Family Youth and Resource Center, which is fantastic for some of the most vulnerable members of our community to come in and get resources, connection with other community partners. So that'll be moved back to that, that facility in a completely upgraded manner. And then the last piece is where you are breaking ground next fall on our Young Child and Family Center. It's a partnership we've been doing with the city of Lacey, talking about possibility of community recreational spaces. They're still working on some of the details, but we're building out the architectural pieces to make sure that down the road, if they have resources and ability to partner with us in that area, that'll be available to them. YMCA has also been a big partner, Timberland Regional Library. And then for our part of it, the instructional part will be an early learning center. We're still working with our construction company and architect, whether we can afford sixteen classrooms or eighteen classrooms on that site, but it'll be somewhere in that area. And functionally take care of, of a pretty significant gap of early learning needs in our community for North Hurston. So we're really excited about that. Big picture, we're always concerned about budget. We're having a lot of conversations with our legislators lately, and I'll, I'll just hit the big three, and then I'll pass on to my colleagues, and they talk about some of the details there. But we're really looking at transportation, which has kind of died. We don't think we're gonna get anything significant in transportation in the legislature. But the other two big ones are really important for us is material supplies and operating costs for M-SOCs. We are significantly underfunded from the state to pay our insurance bills, our heating bills, transport fuel costs, all that sort of stuff, as are others. And then special education is, is another significant piece for us. North Hurston Public Schools relies on about eight million dollars of levy funding annually to make sure that we're fully meeting the needs of all our special education students, and that's, that's a pretty significant problem for all of us across the state. So I'll go ahead and stop there and pass on to Ryan.
I don't think I need to go any further.
Sorry, one sec before we move forward. I wanted to, thank you for highlighting the budget. I was going to ask about the, the student population in terms of like, has it risen, has it lowered?
So in, in our, our situation, North Hurston, it's been pretty flat. It's stabilized. We're down probably about four hundred students from our high point, early, pre-pandemic. We dropped off, we stabilized around fourteen thousand five hundred kids. Many of those kids are, are doing running start and other programs, but within our district, we're able to budget for basically a same-year-over-year budget amount. So we're not necessarily growing, but we're not declining either.
Thank you. And then I just also wanted to give you props on the community conversations that you are having. Last night was the community conversations on rural languages. And so I think it's, it's been pretty great in how you're trying to get different partnerships throughout the community to come together and, and kind of have those conversations with, you know, about student life and programs that you are currently offering at North Hurston Public Schools.
Yeah, that was, our, our board hosted that conversation, and it was very well received, very well, well-attended, and really highlighted for me that some of, some of our connections with community members that are fantastic and maybe haven't been there in the past. So we're really growing that program and excited about it.
Okay, thank you for inviting all of us and myself. My name's Brian Barr. I am the superintendent of the Rainier School District in Rainier. Our enrollment is at nine thirty-eight as of this morning. And our special education population is fifteen point nine percent of that, nine hundred and thirty-eight kids. Our on-time graduation from last year is at ninety-five percent. So we're pretty proud of that. Academic highlights, our elementary is working on a math, a new curriculum for math. Our middle school just completed a comprehensive review of the math program. And we have about thirty students that are taking the SATs next weekend. Community engagement, I have a superintendent advisory committee of students. And we've done, we've gone down to Olympia and met with legislators this year. We go to the community senior center and have lunch with the seniors. And so then in a couple of weeks, we're bringing all of the seniors to the high school and having lunch with them. So it, we, it's, this is the third year we've done it, and it's really successful, and they really enjoy it. We also have our twenty-fifth year Rainier Education Foundation auction on March twenty-ninth. Starts at four o'clock, so please, if you don't have any other obligations, come on out and support Rainier Education Foundation.
When is it?
The, March twenty-ninth. No, this year has been challenging with the finance, stability, financial stability. I'm entering my ninth year as the superintendent. I have, in Rainier, I have dealt with the, the McCleary decision, and then the, of course, the COVID. And, you know, COVID is five years ago. And you, we're still dealing with issues from that. And then now, I think this biggest challenge that I've been, since I've been the superintendent, is this financial stability, because there doesn't seem to be any, any solution. We've, you know, we've tried, we've done different things, and we just keep getting knocked down. And so that, that's really our, our biggest, or my biggest struggle. What I would, would ask is if you have any time or any energy with any of our legislators, please talk to them about supporting schools and talking about, again, if we can't heat the building and keep the building safe with our M-SOC's funding, where right now, M-SOC, they're gonna give us five dollars a kid, more, when our, where our insurance has gone up double. And so those are the things that we struggle with every day. And so that's, that's what I would ask of you, if you could do that, and that would be fantastic. In closing, I want to thank you for supporting us and, and having us come to this meeting every year. I'd also like to, a celebration is that our girls' cross-country team this fall won the state championship of cross-country.
Ready, roll. Kevin Bogutson, I'm the superintendent at Tumwater, year two, so like the veteran, actually, I think you're the, you're the veteran of our group now. But year two, still learning a lot. I feel like I'm like gonna be the like negative. I'll try to, I'll have some positive things, but it's a rough, a rough go in Tumwater right now. We are running an operating deficit of about four point five million dollars for the first time. Well, this is about the second month in a row we went negative in the cash fund balance, so we're borrowing from capital. We have a negative million-dollar cash balance at this particular moment. Which just means we have basically spent our, our bank account, you know, we had some money in the bank, and we've been overspending that, and the, the well has run dry. And so we have pretty significant cuts across our system into the coming year. And at the same time, kind of struggling with, you know, getting the legislature to really adequately fund schools. So it's like, we have kind of two problems. We have made some decisions as a school district to spend more money than, I know my neighbor here is in Yelm, they've been experiencing some similar things. We actually passed our levy and are facing some of this. So it's like, we don't have a reason to well, there is reasons for this, but it's like, we are, we need to make kind of resizing our operation, and that's kind of all of us are doing. So all the things that have been really important to our community and to these schools, a lot of those are going away. Class size is going up, and again, all these things that people prioritize. So pretty rough go right now is we sent out, we've done like a resolution to, to reduce staff. Almost nearly sixty staff will be reduced in the coming year. A bunch from district office, a bunch classroom teachers, and that's all kind of even happening right before spring break, as we do some transfers and move people around. We've also been in the paper quite a bit. I, I feel like I probably just need to bring this up, is around, kind of, we're front and center in the state of Washington around transgender athlete participation in, in school sports. So we have a federal Title IX investigation that's ongoing, as we have sort of federal administration saying one thing, and our state administration saying another, and the Tumwater School District's sort of dab, dab in the middle of it. So we're kind of navigating that in a community that is obviously torn on this. My school board is torn on this. And so it is causing kind of a lot of a lot of angst in the Tumwater School District at this time, and in our community, as we start to just try to navigate these political issues that come rolling into our schools. And so that has been a significant challenge over the last month, month and a half, and I, I, I don't, I, I could talk about that probably at length, but it has been a significant challenge for us. I'll, I'll transition to some positive things. We're in the midst of strategic planning. So we haven't had a strategic plan for a while. There's been a turnover of some superintendents, and it takes a little while for, for, for us to be in, in place to sort of develop a strategic plan that then actually will be in operation. Think we'd like to do that. At the time, we have some money to actually achieve some of those goals, but I'm still excited about the process. We've had hundreds of people, including students. We had sixty students from middle school and high school participate in that process. We've had county commissioners participate in that process. So there's been a, a lot of community input, and so we are excited about that, and our board's really excited to have a strategic plan. We have, one of our, our wrestlers, I don't know if you're Sloan Kruger, four-time state champ, undefeated her entire career at Black Hills High School. So she is amazing, being recruited by the best, some of the biggest colleges in the, in the United States.
Undefeated her whole career?
Undefeated her whole career.
That's insane.
Yeah. So she is, she is quite something.
Yeah.
And what else is positive? I'll just leave it at that.
You're here with us.
Yeah, we're here with you. It's been, you know, again, it's, I, I, again, even despite all this, I think Tumwater's a great community. We have a lot of really excellent, excellent teachers, and people doing great work every day. Some of these things get distracted from that work, and we see that all the time, so happy to be here.
I have a question. So in the midst of this Title IX investigation and everything going on with, with the transgender youth in sports, what is the school district doing to support students who might feel unsafe due to this ongoing investigation?
Great question. I mean, we keep trying to send the message that regard, all of this stuff that's happening is is really outside of our schools right now. I mean, we are trying to, to send the message that we are following, following our policies around supporting and supporting all students, specifically transgender students. We're meeting with students. I know our, our high school administrative team has really been really busy with that. Lots of emails back and forth, trying to reiterate our support for students. So regardless of all this, like, there's some things that need to get themselves worked out through the courts and all that. At the same time, these actions, they, they hurt, and they don't, they don't feel welcoming and supportive. And so I think we're, it's a tough navigation. I don't, I don't quite have the answer. We are making some efforts to do that. I'm scheduling meetings with, with different groups and community members and families as they, as they need to at least hear some additional support, and we're doing the best we can to kind of navigate that together. So it is a pretty significant challenge for us right now.
Yeah, no, I can imagine how challenging it is. What are the specific groups that you're connecting with to try to mitigate the damages?
Yeah, we have, like, one of our board members is, is connected pretty strongly with PFLAG. We have our student groups. We have what's the groups called? JSI, yeah, JSI, sort of gay straight alliance groups. And then there's some others, other community advocacy. Trying to think. And I'm meeting with just even individuals that are kind of connected to different groups. There's some transgender individuals in the community who have reached out to me, as we've connected, and just kind of talking about how to navigate this successfully. I think we're all kind of struggling with like what's best to not make the situation worse as well, so.
Yeah, and I, I don't blame you for not having all the answers. So I don't, I mean, to put you on the spot and say you're responsible. I have heard positive feedback from some of the transgender community members that said Tumwater is being really receptive to feedback, so I think that's good. I just, I worry about the students who might be impacted by this and maybe don't know how to speak up, or do they have enough resources to feel like they can come forward and say, hey, I'm struggling because this is a big deal, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure I could say yes across the board with that. I think our, I know our principals have felt like they're right in the fray with this and are trying to be, you know, outreach, and I encourage them to have those relationships. I know they want to support our student athletes and students across our system.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Hi, thanks for having us. My name is Chris Wood, superintendent in Yelm. This is my second year as well. I'll start with our, our current challenge, budget. We failed our levy for the third time. And I think a lot of lessons learned from that. There isn't one reason why. We heard everything from tired of paying taxes to we hear that schools are fully funded. What are you teaching our kids? Transparency, mismanagement. Um, uh, transparency, mismanagement of funds, um, test scores, graduation rates, you know, just a wide range of feedback. And I think we've done a really nice job of listening to our community to, to try to learn. Um, what are some of the, the concerns that people have? Uh, many of the concerns that people have don't have anything to do with Yelm Community Schools. And they're bigger than that, as we've heard from my colleagues around funding. And so, uh, as a result of the failed levy last spring, we started cuts because that's a loss of about fifteen percent of our, our revenue and that's about fifteen million dollars. And last year we eliminated a hundred positions across the district. Um, we cut nearly ten million last year um, across programs, services. And um, things look different in, in our, in our schools right now. We have to do additional cuts this spring. Um, as we move into next year, we um, not only had the, the failed levy, but um, in addition, we had to do the reduction in force. Um, we are in binding conditions with the state. And um, all that to say, um, we're also doing pretty well. Um, all things considered, as far as the cuts that we've had to make and really kind of the analogy I'll use is, is kind of tearing things down to the studs in rebuilding. And so uh, we are also going into strategic planning, uh, which I think the timing is perfect. Because of our situation, it allows us to take a good look at who we are and what do we believe as a school district and what are the areas that we want to focus on. And um, really getting back to, to basics. And I think this is going to be a really good thing for us. We have sent out applications to our community uh, for those who would like to be part of that uh, strategic planning committee. From students to staff to families, um, to board members, to community members. Uh, we're gonna be starting that work after spring break. And our goal is to de- develop a strategic plan that'll be the roadmap for Yelm Community Schools moving forward with or without levy dollars. And um, the reality of it is, um, you know, we're not the only one in, in the state that didn't pass their levy. And I think quite honestly, we're gonna see more of that, um, given the current climate. And unfortunately, levies have become very, very political in public education and that has caused some significant challenges. In addition to strategic planning, uh, one of the other things we're preparing for is a boundary adjustment. So next year we'll be taking a look at our, um, our boundaries across the district. Um, we have about a thousand units coming on board between now and twenty twenty eight, just in the city limits. That's not even counting uh, out in the county. So that'll be apartments, duplexes, single-family homes. Uh, people are moving to Yelm. And so we anticipate we'll see an increase in enrollment even uh, in, despite the, the levy loss. And so um, our, our elementaries are full. And so we're gonna be taking a look at those boundaries to see if we can even out some of that enrollment uh, to take some of the pressure off a couple of our buildings that are more full than the others. Uh, we have six elementaries that feed into two middle schools and then one high school and then one extension school. So um, a big focus of ours is strategic planning and taking a look at our boundaries as we move forward. But also continuing to learn from our community um, and listen to them about uh, the things that we can improve on as a district and that we can do better. We're not gonna shy away from areas where we're missing the mark. We want to make sure that um, we're providing the best that we can for our kids, whether we have levy dollars or not. And so for Yelm, um, we're really paying attention to the MSOC bill. We're really paying attention to the special education bill because for us, um, we don't have the additional fifteen percent coming to us. And um, our board will continue to wrestle with um, when we run the levy again. We've elected not to do it um, next month or in August. And so we're potentially looking at November. So those are kind of the, the big things happening in Yelm right now.
Questions for Yelm?
We all see a little bit of growth. Those like apartments, it's like eleven kids per hundred units. So it doesn't, it takes a while to add up like to kids. And I know we've done these, all of us, a lot of us have done these studies, a lot fewer kids in like as, even as apartments and houses are being developed.
And I think the last thing I'll add is, is one thing that we are seeing and we want to continue to, to stress is the importance of our community coming together for our students. And so out of, um, out of adversity, I think what we're gonna see is um, something really good for our kids. And so I'm very optimistic and looking forward to the planning as we move forward. And I think um, this has provided us an opportunity to bring people together at the table to have conversation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. I, Kirsten Rue. I am the new superintendent of the Griffin School District. Um, but worked for a long time in Thurston County. I was, I worked for North Thurston Public Schools as an administrator for about almost twenty years. Um, so I, it, it's been a great shift to Griffin for me. Um, very welcoming community and I, it was a smooth transition and I am grateful for that. Um, very grateful for that. Uh, some things, uh, just a little bit about Griffin in terms of how many students we serve, et cetera. We are the smallest of the districts in, in Thurston County. So we have five hundred ninety-five students. We started the year with five eighty. So we've slowly been adding students. Most of them come to us via transfer request. Um, we are a TK through eighth grade school district. So our, most of our students uh, head to Capital High School. Um, but they have the option to, yep, uh, to go elsewhere. I, we were really proud of the fact that uh, the class of two thousand twenty-four that graduated from Olympia Schools, one hundred percent of our kids graduated on time. So looking at the kids who come from Griffin and then move through, um, that, that's remarkable. And um, and it indicative of a great partnership too with the Olympia Schools. Um, gotta give them a little credit for uh, for getting our kids graduated on time. Um, so I, we, some, uh, some other aspects of, of things that are going really well for us. We, last February, we passed uh, both an EPNO and a um, capital levy. Um, and there's good things happening as a result of having passed those levies. Uh, including some facility updates that we're working on replacing really outdated boiler. Um, but more importantly, also exploring ways that we can um, run our building in a, a, a greener, more environmentally friendly manner. Um, and we're pursuing some technology updates that we're probably overdue as well. Um, we are also engaging in a strategic planning process. Uh, when I got hired, I heard loud and clear from our board members that that was one of their greatest priorities, was wanting to set that in motion. Um, and so we, I, we launched on that. We are um, sort of taking an innovative approach. Um, being a small district, we couldn't, we, the cost is high often for running a strategic planning process. But we found an AI company to partner with. Um, and I want to give kudos to Clint Endicott from Tenino, who has been partnering with us on, um, on that process and just been a, a planning partner with me. And um, and phase one of the strategic planning process is about complete. And then we're on to phase two. Uh, and should be, should have that in place by the end of the year. Um, in terms of challenges, I would just echo what my colleagues shared earlier. Um, there are fiscal challenges and I would, I would share that Griffin fiscally might have gone into this year in a financially better spot than many districts in the area. And still, and still, we were not able to start this school year uh, meeting the um, ending fund balance requirement that uh, that our policy requires. We were um, almost a million shy of that. And, and so we are, um, you know, probably a year or two uh, from being in a similar spot to um, to the challenges faced by some of, uh, some of the Thurston County districts already. Um, so something will need to change in terms of how at uh, funding of public education occurred. So.
Questions for Griffin? Thank you.
All right.
Rochester.
Uh, good afternoon or morning. No, we're, we're still morning. Thank you so much for having us here today. Um, I'm Jennifer Bethman. I'm the superintendent in Rochester. And just a little bit about our district. So two thousand eighty students. Uh, enrollment's been pretty consistent. We had a slight increase from last year to this year. Um, but the interesting thing is that our kindergarten and our first grade classes are smaller than they've ever been. So our increases are happening at about the middle school level. Um, but I'm a little fearful because our kindergartners and our first grade classes are at one twenty-five. And they, for kindergarten this year and first grade this year. So typically those classes have been over a hundred and fifty students. So we are seeing a decrease at some of the primary now. Registering now for kindergarten. So if you have a kindergarten student in Rochester or you know anybody, tell them to register now for next year. Um, just as everybody said, we also are working with our, the financial side of everything. We um, have made a thirteen percent budget reduction over the past two years and that was with a small increase in students. Um, that primarily is, I wouldn't say primarily, there's lots of reasons we had to make that, those reductions. We did bring a community uh, group together that existed of stakeholders from all different areas of our community to help us in deciding how we were gonna make that budget reduction. But the MSOC costs that you've heard about, our material supplies and operating costs are just increasing at rates we can't even keep up with. Um, we had a twenty-two percent increase in our utilities costs since twenty twenty. And we had a hundred point three percent increase in cost for our insurance rates since twenty twenty. And our increase in MSOC funding was only at fifteen percent. So just an exorbitant amount. And if we put that in a little bit different terms, in twenty twenty, our, our insurance cost is three hundred and eight thousand dollars. And this year we paid seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So, and there's, again, the increase from the state was fifteen point eight percent for the, for covering those costs. We are being asked to cover that with the funds that we get from our local levies. That's the only way I can do that. Or by having less teachers in the classroom or less administrators or it, I mean, the costs are increasing and we're not getting more funding to support that. Um, we did run an uh, EPNO levy last year and it passed with over sixty percent. So a lot of support from our community for our schools, which was great. We did also have a bond on the ballot though, and that did not pass. We had fifty, fifty-three percent, which was really disappointing. We have a high school that was built in nineteen eighty-nine. It's thirty-six years old right now. Um, we're gonna be going out to run the bond again, but by the time that high school is replaced, it's gonna be forty years old at least. And it's an old building. It was, if you can imagine, the building's built in nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven. It's, it's a, it's a building that was built then and you can tell. Um, so I want something better for our kids. We want to be able to provide the programs that we need for our kids. We're doing our darndest, but it's a challenge right now. Half of our students are in portables at any given time that are high school. So we can't fit them in the buildings. Um, one of the things that I'm just starting to work on that I'll mention, I have not gone very far with this at all yet, but we run our own water system at the, uh, for the high school and the, and the primary and the elementary school on the property there. And I'm gonna be talking to Grand Mound Water System to see what it would take to potentially do some. Yeah, that's the county system. Yeah, uh-huh. Um, so just, just starting to engage in those conversations. Thought I'd put it out there just so you're aware.
Yeah, no, can you, I, this is the first time I'm finding out about this. So, yeah, I think that's very interesting.
Have our attention.
We have, we have well, a well system. I mean, we have to go through, we work closely with Rochester Water to make sure we're doing all the testing and everything.
Away from our.
Exactly. Yes, I was just looking at the map and we were, we were strategizing, how can we, what can we do differently? What, you know, cause it's, yeah, the water system is a challenge to run. I mean, that's, so yes, I do want to talk and.
Would it have to be within the UGA though?
Um, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's right over the railroad tracks now is part of the, where I see there being something we're gonna have to talk about because I think the system's gonna have to come under the railroad tracks. But then I've heard that it's over at Maple Lane, which is on the side of the street where the schools are. So I'm not, it's hard to tell from the map. So I'm gonna be reaching out for more conversations there.
Start with Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Stay away from commissioners.
Um, I would also uh, just like to share, we've been working on strategic plan. We actually are in the final stages. We started um, at the end of April a year ago. We had seventy-five people that came and met over five times to work together and they were what we called the core team. We surveyed students in grades three, two, through twelve. We had one thousand students that responded to our surveys. And all of our teachers had input, our administrators were all providing input. It's been a great process. Um, our board will approve our strategic plan at their next board meeting in March. So it's an exciting place to be and good work to do and um, people are excited about the work that we're headed to do. Um, other celebrations are dual language program that's in our second year right now. And just something that our community is really um, supporting and wanting to see more of. And it's, the kids are doing great. It is so fun to walk into those classrooms. If you ever want to visit, come, we'll take you in and do some visits. Um, we are also doing letters training for all of our teachers through middle school. And that's all about teaching them how to teach reading. And the most exciting part about that is that our middle school teachers, where I thought they would look at me and say, why are you teaching us how to teach reading? Were, are the ones that are gravit- gravitating and wanted the information more than anybody else. Our, our primary and our elementary want it, but they already had some of it and it's kind of repeating. Um, reminding them about good strategies and things, but our middle school are just so glad that we're doing it with them. And the letters program wasn't actually meant for middle school, but because of where our kids are and needing some support, um, it's really good instructional strategies for them to have. And then the last thing, just a celebration of our robotics and our drones team. Um, they continue to do well. They made it to Nationals last year again. And we are going to state competition here in the next month and hopefully they'll be on their way to Nationals again. They, the robotics and drones, drone team at Nationals came in second last year. Again, we are gonna, we're gonna get the, the championship. I, I sense that this might be the year. Um, but they've been there five years in a row. This will be six years that they will go. And it's quite an honor to be selected to go and, and compete at that level because there's thousands of kids that compete and these kids are some of the best.
That starts to mean like, it's not just you had a few exceptional kids, like you have a program.
It's a program.
You're six years going to Nationals.
Yes. It's pretty amazing and it's.
Met them in the last couple of years.
Yes, uh-huh. And it's the kids building the program now too, which is really exciting. But yes, we have an amazing teacher who's been working with.
Yeah, the teacher's key.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Olympia. You, you have a really good high school wrestling coach.
Yes, we do.
And he is very interested in building a wrestling facility of some sort. And, and he reached out to me and was asking kind of how to engage with you guys. And I kind of gave him some advice on who to talk to and kind of how to set up the conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we had eight kids go to state from wrestling this year, which is amazing.
He's, he's a worker. He could, you just tell him yes and he will, he, he'll build it himself.
We got rules. We have to follow them. Careful. Yeah. Thank you for talking with him.
Yep.
Uh, Patrick Murphy, Superintendent Olympia School District. Uh, and it's been a fantastic year in Olympia. And truth be told, most years are fantastic in the Olympia School District. I was doing some quick mental math. There's probably about forty to fifty thousand students being served in this room. And the overwhelming majority of them every day have wonderful experiences. Um, this is a little oasis of love and learning in this part of the state. There's amazing superintendents, school leaders and teachers in all of our school districts doing great work. And there's great cooperation between the county, our city governments and our school boards. I just feel really fortunate to, to work here. Um, in Olympia, we have a ninety-four point one percent on-time graduation rate. In Olympia, we have a ninety-four point one percent on-time graduation rate. Um it's the highest I think it's been in recent history. We are sending kids off to work in the the world of work with the skills necessary to for the most high demand fields. Um because of the work we're doing in our career and technical education programs. We're sending kids off to the military. We're sending kids off to the military academies. We're sending kids off to the most prestigious universities in the world at the in the Olympia School District. And um that doesn't happen by chance. It's because we serve incredible kids from great families that support us at the ballot and volunteering in our schools. We have performing arts programs that I would put against any professional performing troupe in the country. I mean, they're just amazing. And I would encourage everybody, if you haven't already done so, come to our graduation ceremonies that are happening in a couple of months and listen to what our students are going off and doing. I mean, it is just absolutely remarkable. And we're doing that in the midst of, yeah, challenges. There are challenges and and it's a very creative group around this table that look at ways to handle those challenges. I've been telling people going around the schools, I'm actually strangely weirdly optimistic about this legislative session. And if you've been paying attention, you know, went from a six billion dollar deficit to I think most recently it's a sixteen billion dollar deficit. And everybody I talked to says, lower your expectations, Patrick. There's not gonna be any money coming. But the reality is, is that we've been very focused, as as my colleagues have said, on those big three issues. Transportation, M S O Cs and special education. And if those issues were taken care of, it really would set the table for us to actually do things with our enrichment levies that are meant to be enrichment. So Brian mentioned five dollars per kid for M S O C. To cover our shortfall in M S O C in the Olympia School District, we need five hundred dollars per kid. I'm just giving you an idea of the 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 delta between those two things. There's a bill that's gonna be there this afternoon that I'm hoping to testify on that would move it to seventy-seven dollars per kid. Doesn't get us to five hundred, but it gets us more of the way there. Last year we got twenty-one dollars per kid. Again, I'm trying to give you an idea of what the what the scope is. For special education, we have a six point three million dollar shortfall in the Olympia School District. We take that out of our enrichment levy. We all do. We're using enrichment levy dollars to pay for special education services. That makes no sense and it's it's wrong. Some it's a it's a federal right and it's a moral obligation to serve our kids that are often our most vulnerable in our system. There is a bill um that will get rid of the cap that we're gonna hopefully testify on today and will actually increase the multiplier. The cap, somebody said that they're at fifteen point, yeah, we're at sixteen and a half percent in the Olympia School District. If you count our preschool, we're at eighteen percent. The cap is sixteen. We're not fully funded for every kid that receives special education services. They get rid of the cap, that's a good thing. Cause none of us turn away kids when we say, sorry, we're over the cap. We accept every kid that comes into our system. But it's the multiplier. The multiplier is the most important thing and it's more complicated. But all kids that come into our system are general education kids first, special education kids second. We multiply that general ad apportionment by a a decimal, and it gives us a better amount of money to serve those kids. And there's an increase in the multiplier that will not get us there, but it'll probably get us halfway there. And we're gonna be pro, and we're gonna talk about that this afternoon as well. So there's some things that I think that this community and all of our communities can do to to bring light and and to bring information to our legislators to make the best decisions because education is their paramount duty. It's in the state constitution. And I think our stories resonate really well because we do such a great job with our kids. So I'll leave it at that.
Questions?
I just wanna thank all of you for coming. I really enjoyed this meeting. I enjoyed it last year and I enjoyed it again this year. It's really great to hear.
About one more.
Oh, sorry. You're sitting way over there.
Any other Olympia questions before we?
Not for Olympia, no.
I just wanna say on that, when you mentioned the um the, did you say like the uh the programs for theater and?
Yeah.
Arts and stuff. My kids are capital. Our drawing art center is amazing. Stuff that I see them do, and I think back to stuff we did in my high school and what these kids do. One of my favorite ones is there's a there's a show where the kids write the plays. The kids direct the plays, the kids act in the plays. A lot of them have music and kids both compose the music and perform the music. And I'm stunned by I I you don't wanna miss that one. It's so cool. But anyway, I just wanna say, a hundred percent.
Good morning, everybody. Uh Clint Endicott, proud superintendent of Tenino School District. This is my fourth year. Our enrollment has been fairly stable. We've dropped from previous highs. But we're right now just around twelve hundred and fifty students. And uh one of the things I love about Tenino is it's just a really tight-knit community. We have a very supportive and giving group of students, families and communities. Whole see Commissioner Menstrine has the Tenino Young and Heart Theater. We have a really growing arts community within Tenino, which has been fantastic for our schools. And we're really trying to build on those partnerships. We had a event uh within the last month where we had a K twelve art exhibition where there was live performances on the stage and the gym, and it was just fantastic. The turnout, I mean, you would have thought that we were having a state basketball game. I mean, it was just fantastic. So a lot of really great things happening. Um since joining Tenino, one of the big pushes for me is what do we need to do to create opportunities for our students so that they can graduate? And I'm really proud to say that, like some of my colleagues have shared, our graduation rate is at ninety-three percent. That's the highest it's been in the last twenty years. And part of that is our commitment to making sure that we're creating opportunities for kids to get across the stage. And also recognizing that maybe a student might not make it by June. But that doesn't mean we throw in the towel, and the kid gives up, and we meet with the families. So in Tenino, we've actually added a second small ceremony in August for those students that don't make it in June, so that they're not missing that very special opportunity to celebrate that they've achieved something substantial. And that smaller ceremony is pretty awesome because it's very intimate. You got families coming. There's just a lot of pride in the room. Board members attend that. And so for us in Tenino, it's really, what are we gonna do to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and the community itself? We've really strengthened our community partnerships. Uh the board regularly recognizes the partnerships that we have. And we just have such a phenomenal staff, just great building leaders, great teachers. The legendary Geraldine Maxfield, who's running possibly the best F F A program in the country. It's just, I can't say enough good things about the programs that we have. Uh again, opportunities that we've created and partnerships with everybody from stone carvers to just everything that's going on in Tenino has been fantastic. And in terms of challenges, eh we're really fortunate. We've been able to uh keep our district right-sized with staffing. It would be fantastic if we could get additional funds from the state so that we're not having it backfill with enrichment dollars. But overall, again, we're very fortunate that we've been able to make uh small adjustments basically from day one when I joined the district. And that's carried through to where we're not in a position where we're having serious budget woes.
Thank you. My colleagues can confirm. I didn't pull this out for your benefit.
No.
I drink from that every day. And it's coffee, even if it's wine. Okay, any uh yeah, Commissioner.
Thank you. I uh wanna thank everyone for being here. And um it's interesting to see year over year kind of the difficulties, and they're usually around the same. Uh last year it was uh enrollment, right? I heard a lot of enrollment. Uh and this year it's the financial piece. And so kind of going back to um what, you know, we can do as a board to be supportive. You know, I have kids who are currently attending uh our local school districts. And so um O S D over there. Um but, you know, we are touching base with our legislators quite a bit, right? Um so I guess like just kind of answering your request on what we can do. I mean, for me, like I would love to write a letter to our legislators, um kind of just strength strengthening that partnership that, yes, you know. Um the counties don't have any direct role into the funding, but we are supportive of our school districts. Um and they do need the funding to keep operating. Um because I, you know, I always like to say, like, the downward effect is then, you know, the county's later paying for it. Whenever there is, you know, if kids aren't enrolled in the schools or they're not um gathering these opportunities at the school, then it comes down to public health and social services, and then we're paying for this later down the line. And um kind of trying to support our schools, I think, is very important. So I guess I'm just proposing to uh the board, is there interest in in writing a letter of um to our legislators of letting them know we are in support of uh schools funding, funding schools?
I would love to support that. Um I I'm wondering about the timeline, if we were to like maybe write a letter. I mean, one of the bills I heard come up was the M S O C bill. Today, okay.
This afternoon. I think it might be worth sharing, and if my colleagues wanna jump in on this, that in the last seven years, the amount of money that went to public schools has lowered from just over fifty percent of the state's overall budget to now less than forty-four percent. And again, the paramount duty outlined in the constitution of Washington State is to fully fund public education. And I think that if it could be highlighted, that's something that captures every single district in the state and every single district in Thurston County. The amount of money that the legislature is dedicating of the overall budget to our public schools has decreased as a percentage of the overall budget, and we're really feeling the effects of that.
So we can make that point and reference that the the two bills that are still, although you said they're gonna be decided?
They're, well, they're at the House Appropriations Committee. They're open for hearing today. It's Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-two and Senate Bill fifty-two sixty-three. Fifty-one ninety-two is M S O C and fifty-two sixty-three is special ed.
Update a little later. Deborah's in the room taking notes.
Our lobbyist is here uh in the room as well.
And the hearing's at four, so you have to submit things by three.
Perfect. Thank you. There's like one partner I feel is not in the room, and I'm not sure how you guys engage with them, but the New Market Skills Center. You know, like they they serve all of our schools and beyond. You know, they go all the way to Gray's Harbor, down to Lewis County. And uh, you know, I've I've met with their superintendent a couple of times, and I, you know, he's he's saying that they've got a lot of demand. Uh they've got, you know, he could build out another building and add more vocational training. And, you know, in my mind, putting a, you know, a high school kid out that's got H V A C certification is just as valuable as when somebody goes and gets their A A through Running Start. And so he like he's he's ready and he's excited about, you know, expanding and their their programs and their building. How can we all like get on the same page and support that effort? I cause I it's confusing to me on like where he makes it, cause it's not like, you know, like a client goes to the school board, and then we work it out with the community. They've got a bigger picture, right? How do how how can we all?
We actually all sit on the board for the Skill Center.
Yeah.
And so.
Tell me more.
Yeah, so superintendents and employees from different directors and things from our local uh school districts that actually use the Skill Center, we sit on the board. And so, yes, the numbers you're looking at, we talk about it. We talk about programs. We talk about which programs might be good to add. Should we maybe add an evening session? Um how many kids are coming from Rochester? How many are coming? So we continually watch that and look at that. And do we, you know, is there transportation we need to provide for these kids? Because just like you said, we want our kids to be able to access those programs. There's some great things happening there, and we work very closely with them.
We actually have a board meeting on Friday at New Market, and so we are closely aligned with them. Tom Water being the host district for uh New Market. We're very much in partnership with them.
Yeah, and they're doing awesome.
I I'm impressed when I go there.
Yeah, no, then we're we're gonna expand a little bit. I think we're gonna be adding, I think the board's making a final decision to add an electrical um kind of electrical pathway for our construction trades program. So and without really the space, and so that's kind of the challenge. We could add some things. And we're waiting for state money to come in to, again, it's kind of funded differently uh through our new skill centers. But there's some major innovations that need to happen, and um I don't know even if expansion's on the thing. It's an old, all those buildings are pretty old, so definitely need some upgrades. But um those programs are packed full, waiting lists almost across the board, so very successful.
Yeah, when you get to a place where you've got, like, you wanna show us or tell us about it, I would.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, if you have not been there, you should be come out and Matt would be happy to give a little tour, and it's a great place to visit.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Can I say my thought that I was gonna say really quick, just really, really quick? I just wanna thank you all. Um I wanted to say special thanks to Kirsten and Troy, our new superintendents. Um I have firsthand knowledge of the impact you have on kids because I was lucky enough to go to Chinook while you were there. And I'm really excited to see you in this new position. Um I have no doubts that you'll build on the previous accomplishments of Griffin School District, and I'm happy to see you here. Troy, I'm excited to see you building on the momentum at North Thurston Public Schools. You, you know, your district has a special place in my heart, not just because it's District Five, but also because I graduated from North Thurston High School. So um I just, I really appreciate the partnerships you mentioned and uh the program expansion. Just knowing that you're doing everything you can to serve students of various backgrounds is really important. So, thank you.
I just wanna say how proud I am as your former principal, sitting here, so.
Thank you. It's really, really cool to be on this side of the table for me.
That's awesome. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
I'll be attached.
See you on Friday.
Yes.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, if you get if you get hooked up to the sewer, that would change your.
We'd be happy to meet with you, John, tonight.
Well, you can start with me.
Good to see you.
Yeah, I know. You didn't wanna hear from Tenino. Thanks, Emily.
So we're all good to give Deborah the thumbs up to sign in and score those bills?
All right.
Okay, what?
We're signing in a pro.
Oh, yeah.
Just telling Deborah, I I heard the direction because it needs to happen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deborah.
Does anyone have a hard stop at noon?
I'm supposed to be, I I'm supposed to be somewhere new, but I could not go.
Are you interested in doing anything else besides signing in pro, like testifying or a letter or anything?
Well, I think Deb's got it.
Okay, cool.
Right.
Thank you.
Question is, we postpone then, then Deb up and.
And then break.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Oh, no.
If that's okay with you guys.
Because Commissioner Grant is not here, and we don't wanna shortchange. We ran over with a hearing examiner's executive session. Can we push this back? We think Commissioner Grant would need to be here, and we wanna give enough time to get into, because this is the meat and potatoes part of the presentation.
Push it back too?
Probably next week.
Okay.
How does that do on timing with the opioid council? Sorry.
It's okay.
We just ran out of time.
Oh, man, I feel. Guys got all dressed up, ready for the ball, and you've been waiting.
That's okay. All right.
Cool.
And we will confirm that Commissioner Grant is here for that conversation.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you.
I think a short conversation on this topic would be worse than just waiting a few more days.
Okay, fine with me. Then we will, yeah, I'm supposed to be in Tom Water at noon. I can make that happen. Cause I'd be back here once. Or punting on opioid. We don't have time, and it's a meaty conversation, and Rachel should be here. Cause she's the.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
So what's the, are we?
We're gonna handle Deborah Legislative Update and then break.
Still trying to do it today?
No, next week.
Oh, okay. Word.
Are we, we've been live streaming? We're still live streaming?
Yeah, they just took the Zoom off because it it uh times out after inactivity.
But it shows us it's muted?
Yes, the livestream operates on a separate system than the Zoom, so the Zoom will timeout if no one else joins.
But the livestream is still going?
The livestream is still going with video.
But I'm not on livestream now because I'm muted. Is that just the Zoom?
No, that's just the Zoom.
So we're still in the middle of me. Okay. So we finished up item three. I'm just wanna keep, in case somebody's out there watching, it's kind of in a clunky flow this morning. Um we are now, uh we are actually gonna postpone item four opioid settlement funds because of a lack of time and the need for a more uh robust discussion with Commissioner Grant present. So we're going to item five, which is Legislative Update, and we have Governor Meehan here.
Hi. Hi, hi, thank you very much for your time. I will try and do this as quickly as possible. I just want to give you kind of a really brief recap of where we're at right now. And then talk about some county specific issues that I think we need to talk about. So we are in day sixty-six of the one hundred and five day regular session. And I think, as you know, the legislature goes in different phases during the legislative session. So the first phase was all these bills were being introduced and a bunch of information was out there, you know, and sort of. So we have passed that phase that the, so almost two thousand bills were introduced. The legislators spent about six weeks, almost six weeks, trying to determine which bills they were going to move forward and moving them off, out of the policy committees. And then they spent about another week moving any bills that had a fiscal impact out of the fiscal committees. And then they had House of Origin cutoff, which was a big cutoff last week. And so they moved the bills out, except for the bills that are necessary to implement the budget. They moved those bills out, they're over in the opposite chamber. While they were moving those bills out, they spent an ungodly amount of hours on the floor, especially the House. Multiple times they went to like two or three in the morning on some really challenging bills. And so now we're in the next phase where those bills that made it out are over in the other chamber. And there's a lot of committee meetings. You heard that the two education bills are being heard in appropriations. I'll make sure that I sign the county and its support on those before three o'clock. And then I think you have twenty-four hours after the those, that hearing in order to submit something, a written letter that'll go into the record. So we're in that phase now where they're trying to figure out which bills they're going to move. But it's a very, it's a shortened timeframe that they have to do that. They only have three weeks to get the bills out of their policy committee. And then they only have six days to get them out of the fiscal committee. And then they only have eight days to move bills off the other floor. So by April sixteenth, we'll have a pretty good idea of which bills are still going to be alive. And then, of course, they're also heavily in the budget phase right now. They've been talking about budget issues since session started. But where they're at right now in the process is the majorities pretty much know what the fundamental pieces are of their budget proposals that are coming out next week. And they were waiting for the revenue forecast to come out, which it did yesterday, it was released yesterday. Kind of figure out, you know, which pieces could be added, what might need to be, you know, shortened, that kind of thing. So we are expecting to see the operating budget proposals come out on Monday as well as the transportation budget proposals and from both chambers. And then the capital budget the following week is the latest plan anyway. One of the things that the, that was highlighted yesterday during the revenue forecast was the uncertainty with what's going on at the federal level and how that might impact the state budget. You know, legislators are working off of the best information that they've got in terms of what revenues are coming in, what costs are going up, what the latest auctions were for the Climate Commitment Act, those, the auction allowances that came in. But we've got the tariff situation and we don't know what's happening with that and how that might impact the state budget. We've got the federal funding cuts that could be coming. Senator Murray was here on Monday talking about the potential Medicaid cuts and the impact that would have to Washington State. So we know that there's a twelve to fifteen billion dollar shortfall in the operating budget. We know that for the transportation budget, they're looking at about a four billion dollar shortfall over the next six years. And that's just for projects. That's not for preservation and maintenance, that's not for the converts, that's not, you know, we've got rising costs. So both the operating and transportation budget are just in terrible condition right now. And then the capital budget is also very constrained, which is important to the conversation that we need to have. So we will see what what they come out with next week and then the following week.
Hey, Deb, I can ask, just because we're, can I actually, could you scoot over one just so that you're on the?
Oh, sure.
YouTube video?
The camera's kind of going back.
Yeah.
I'm walking my knees on this thing.
You're like pulling it right in in the gap of the camera. We want those who are watching remotely to be able to.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
There we go, no problem. So once those budgets come out, then there's a lot more negotiations need to happen. They will, I think that the, on the, one of the budgets that's coming out on Monday, it has a hearing Monday afternoon. So it's, the hearings are going to happen really quick, they're going to move them really quick off the floor. And then they'll go into conference on those budgets to determine, you know, what the priorities are between. Can you guys unmute? And so once, once they pass them off the, their respective floors, they'll go into conference to negotiate the changes between the budgets and what they eventually will do. They're also going to be coming out with, I believe, on the transportation budget, there will be a book one budget, which is current revenues and what projects will be cut or paused. And and I don't mean like new projects, I mean, there are no new projects. It is like what is currently happening and what's going to stop work. And then there will be a book two budget with, if we had additional revenues, here's what we could do in terms of all the different things that need to be done. There will be a revenue bill that has different pieces to it saying, these are the things that we could do to increase revenue. And then they'll.
Sorry, can you, so you're saying, your book one, book two, are those two revisions or are the same budget just in different formats or are different considerations within the budget?
There, my understanding is it'll be two different bills.
Okay.
And so what the first bill will be, this is what we're working under in terms of the existing revenue and what we know about the costs. And here's what it would look like with the different projects and the schedules and that kind of thing. And then book two would be a separate bill that would say, if we had new revenues, here's what we could do. And then there will be a separate bill that said, and these would be the new revenues. This would be the source and it would be a multitude of different things. And then they are still talking about a road usage charge for the state. However, it's, it's not designed to be something that is immediately going to fill the gap in terms of the declining fuel tax revenues. It's going to be something that would be an on-ramp and do a different way of funding transportation because the fuel tax revenues, I reached their peak in like twenty nineteen, we'll never see that again. And it's not keeping up with what we need from our preservation and maintenance for our existing system.
Deb, can I ask that clear, so on the transportation side of things, right? We've. I've heard that the estimate just based on the federal funding, right? And even with the proposal that they were putting forward, that it wouldn't be close to covering the huge gap that there is on the transportation side of things. And so I, you know, my concern is, you know, as they're looking at all of these where to cut, right? Like, do you know if there's been conversations on, is it going to be more for the local side of things? Like, what is exactly, like, are they looking at a specific thing? Do you know?
They're looking, the, the consistent answer that we've gotten is everything's on the table. So they are looking at cuts everywhere. They're looking at project cuts, they're looking at increased fees, they're looking at increased taxes, they're looking at new taxes. They're, I think the Senate probably is, has a more favorable notion. We'll see if that changes by next week, given the revenue forecast that was, I think it's like eight hundred and forty-five million dollars down from the general fund for, through twenty twenty-nine. There, I think there was more discussion in the Senate in terms of maybe transferring some of the sales tax revenue for motor vehicles over to transportation, or at least gradually doing that. I don't think that those conversations have been as fruitful in the House. So I don't think that we're going to see budgets come out from each chamber that look a lot alike. I think they're going to be different, like they always are. And then they're going to, they're going to have to figure out, you know, what the priorities are and who's going to give up what and how they're going to go forward. So that doesn't help, but everything's on the table. And I do know that like on some of the, the policy bills that were out there, like funding public defense and a greater share of cannabis revenue to local governments, those are all bad. So it's just been a really, really bad year to try and get money from the legislature. And our governor has signaled that tax bills are a last resort for him. He, you know, Governor Inslee put out a budget that had several billion dollars in cuts. Governor Ferguson put out priorities that had an additional several billion in cuts. Both controversial and some of the things that they were cutting. And so he has not signaled that he's going to be ready to sign any tax bills, but we'll, but he hasn't said he won't either, so we'll have to wait and see what happens.
We gave direction to Deborah to sign in in pro on those. Senate Bill fifty-seven nineteen kind of like piqued my interest this morning.
Is that the hearings examiner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would remove all authority for local jurisdictions to hold quasi judicial hearings just like we did today and put all decisions in a hearings examiner's lap, the end of story.
So after you shared that with me this morning, we're checking with the seat bed director to get some background on it.
Okay, because I mean, that's even what it says in your, that's really what it says in your, in your synopsis here. And I mean, it says that the hearings examiner's decision would be final.
Right, right.
And and that.
They didn't go to court.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't necessarily think that's a good idea.
The chair, I got to, the hearing was at eight o'clock this morning.
Yeah, I watched that.
Okay, and so the, the chair of the committee, as you heard, is not real thrilled with some of the elements that are in the bill. And then Curtis from WASC also testified.
Said a good job.
Yeah.
One thing that, I mean, they were talking about, you could have, you know, if a smaller jurisdiction wants to, they can lean on with a larger jurisdiction, use their hearings examiner. What they didn't talk about is these smaller jurisdictions, they hire private companies and they just farm out these decisions to, you know, external corporations and that's the end of the story. You know, like in, when I was a mayor, we hired a private company to act as our hearings examiner and that was.
Isn't that a different question than whether the board is another layer of appeal? I mean, you could have a system where the hearings examiner could be that corporation.
You can now, but if this is passed, you can't. Like right now, you have, you know, like us, we're the appeal to the hearings examiner. You can set that up now. Any jurisdiction can have a hearings examiner.
So how is that connected to whether or not a corporation is your hearings examiner?
Because that's the end of this, this changes it toward the hearings examiner is the final.
They don't can't go to court?
That's it.
That's it.
It says right here.
Oh, well, that's a different question.
Yeah, so it, what I'm saying is.
I'm saying take us out, let them go to court. I don't want to stop their judicial review, I just don't want to be part of it.
Well, this is saying they're the final, there is no appeal after that.
That's a two-step like bill, that's taking commissioners out and stopping their ability to go above commissioners. Because now they have both of those steps available.
Yeah, now you can, but this is saying hearings examiner, done.
I'd have to think about that.
Right, and that, that, that to me is, that.
Yeah, especially when there's, when there's sketchiness of who gets to be that hearings examiner.
Yeah, yeah, it's in it, you know, the hearings examiner world.
I always felt like, okay, do whatever you want, because the person can always go to court and get a real judge who actually knows the law to make a real decision. You can goof around with the, with the county commissioners and try to get them to nullify the law, which happens. But you have that ultimate recourse to the, to the courts. But, yeah, I would be, I'd have a problem with not allowing that.
Yeah, so I'm, I would, I would like to see us signed in in opposition to fifty-seven nineteen.
Yeah, so the, the required hearings examiner system decision constitute the final decision, subject to appeal under LUPA.
And I believe WASC is supposed to.
WASC is in opposition.
They, they're, they were other.
Other, they put other, but then they.
Spoke against. Yeah, Curtis did a good job saying there was a number of concerns.
Recommending some, some amendment language, but primarily around the smaller counties. So my impression of this bill was it really affected the smaller counties. And part of the issue was that there's only like sixty hearings examiners across the state.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that you could hire an independent company to do that, so. But I know that, that Senator Solomon, who I believe is the prime on this, that was kind of his thinking was that it would just expedite this. So I'll, I'll see Curtis tomorrow so I can check with him.
Find out what the appeal right would be, you know, like under, I don't know, LUPA, that, whatever that, I mean.
That is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, with that law.
It's not the GMA, but it's kind of, yeah.
We have limited time, what else do we need? I know you wanted to cover some stuff with us.
Um, I do, actually, there's some stuff that we need to cover. So in the report, my weekly report, I sent out some of the bills that died, but including fifty-one fifty-four, the county auditor bill. Some of the bills that are still alive that are important to the county would be thirteen thirty-four, the one percent property tax cap lift. So we'll, that would be for both state and local, so we'll see if that comes forward. It's necessary to implement the budget. And then House Bill eighteen thirteen is still moving. That is the one that basically would move the crisis behavioral health services to the regional B H A S Os.
Rachel's dancing behind you.
Yay, we're very excited about it. And she testified. And then House Bill twenty fifteen is the proposal by the Legislative Black Caucus to, to have new funding mechanisms to help recruit and retain officers, but also gives a new definition of public safety. And it really prioritizes crisis intervention and de-escalation training.
What's the number of this bill, sorry?
Twenty fifteen. And trauma-informed policing. So that's the hundred million dollars that Governor Ferguson said in his inaugural address that he wants to see in the budget.
That died.
Twenty fifteen?
Fifty-sixty was the hundred million?
Fifty-sixty did die, but twenty fifteen, I think, is going to be the vehicle that if it.
That hundred million is still in that twenty, I thought twenty fifteen was just the public safety sales tax re-d, kind of like.
There's three parts to it, but there's also a grant program for it. And that's where they're thinking the hundred million would go if that's what the legislature decides to put in there.
Because that's a governor's proposal and then there's a.
Governor priority, yeah, yeah. And it, and WASP did testify in support and so did WASC. But it would, the money would not just go for recruiting and retaining law enforcement. It wouldn't just be for boots on the ground, it would be for a variety of different things that, that the Legislative Black Caucus really prioritized as something that was important. Deborah Entman is the prime sponsor, she also serves on the police accountability task force and so.
So what you're saying, if I understand, is that, that you have a hundred million dollars to recruit officers, but the definition of what falls, what that could be spent on is going to widen to more.
Or the training requirements of the officers.
The stuff beyond just like traditional police officers, is that the concept?
That's very, very simply that, that is. And there are, there's two different funding mechanisms in the bill. One would be give counties and cities council manic authority in order to go up to the point three percent public safety sales tax and then be able to use that for like public defense and other different kinds of things. So it, it, it is still a good chunk of money, but it's spread out in different ways now.
So we passed the point one five, right?
We passed the point two.
Point two, would that give us the ability to council matically add the additional point one?
Yes. So that's an important one to keep an eye on. And then.
And that gives us act, if we do pass that, that gives us access to the hundred million, right? But if you don't pass that, you don't have access to the hundred million.
I think they amended that on the floor. I think Representative Reed had an amendment on the floor amendment that didn't prevent you from being able to access that if you didn't fully access the.
Because that was a component at one point, okay.
Question, I, I guess, I, can I go a little bit into the weeds of this bill, right? For the access of that a hundred million? But so the past effect that our voters have passed it does not, would not count towards that?
Ask me.
So, so.
We, we passed a point two, so we can only go up to, our council matic would only be the one, an additional point one.
So do we have to do a council matic action to access funding?
That's what I'm thinking that they changed in the floor amendment, yeah.
Not, well, we already passed.
So now there is a chance to, so there.
So that additional point one, we don't have to go back to the voters if it passes. We could just do that here.
So would that give us the authority, because it kind of broadens what you can spend that money on?
That's kind of what I was thinking, I was like.
Yeah, we've already established what we're going to spend that money on in this safety tax, the past.
But if we do the council matic one percent, could we then maybe?
I would think we would have more latitude for that.
Or even the point two, or would we just have?
Or even the point-two, or would we just have?
No, not the point-two, that was just that I want to, that's a one percent.
I will, I will send you a more thorough write-up.
I thought you were saying that additional hundred million is what uses, is used on the expansive.
The, I'll send you.
What was the bill number, can I have the bill number again?
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah. Because there are, there are three different components to it, including some stuff for the CJTC. So I'll send you, I'll send you more information on.
I would love that, thank you.
Yeah, because that, Deb, larger strategy, board is wrestling through its own budgetary issues. We need to know what we're going to be asking for, what money's tied down, and what, if the board's going to start doing council matic stuff, how do we integrate all of that into an approach, because the voters are only going to take so much.
Yeah, a strategic approach on this one.
I think at one point, there were like twelve bills in front of the House Finance Committee that gave council manic authority to counties and cities to raise their taxes, to help fund things.
There were twelve, but now there's how many?
I'm not sure how many are left, but they're, you know, they can also take pieces of some and put it in another if the titles and scope work too, so, so we'll have to see. So I do want to, I know we're running out of time here, but I do want to mention that another bill that is really important to the county is Senate Bill fifty-seven forty-five, and that has to do with ITA representation. Right now, in its current form, the bill, and this is Senator Dingra's bill, the bill would allow the Office of Public Defense to provide counsel because the new University of Washington Behavioral Health Center has beds available, but King County Public Defense said, we, this is too expensive for us, we can't, we can't provide that. And so, so they are, the proposal is to change the way that the state helps with this. And mostly that changes for King County. However, the bill now affects three counties, it affects King County, Thurston County, and Clark County. Clark County does not yet have their state facility up and running, but Thurston County does. And so in some conversations that I've been having with Brad Banks and Joe Avalos, and I have a meeting with Joe at one o'clock this afternoon to get more information from him. The court, and Leonard and Josh, thank you for asking them to provide this information. We got information from the court and from the clerk, what their additional costs are related to these ITA beds and the work that needs to be done. And my understanding that is that public defense also has some costs related to that. So like a total of one-point-two million. And I have a meeting this afternoon with Senator Dingra to talk with her about this. Camille is coming with me, and Judge Thomas is going to be hybrid in this meeting also to talk to Senator Dingra about the additional operating costs that the county has related to Maple Lane. And we don't, what we don't want to see is, we don't want, for example, the legislature to give the county the ability to tax its residents to help pay for the additional services, when I think nine percent of the beds are Thurston County residents and the rest come from other places. There also have been some challenges when the sixteen beds first opened up, DSHS just filled those beds. Understanding that there are true blood deadlines that need to be met, and they have that, but the court is asking that somehow the beds are not filled all at once. I talked with the, she, well, then she was the Assistant Secretary at DSHS. Now she's the, one of the leaders over at OFM, she changed jobs this week. But she said, when the legislature provides funding for those additional one-hundred-and-forty beds, that they are going to fill them as quickly as possible, so.
Is that total or Maple Lane?
Maple Lane. I think, I think that the updated, yeah, the updated information that the court's got in January.
Talk about that a little bit, Deborah, why, why is it the beds continue to increase?
I don't know.
It's, they're not increasing, you guys, that, that, it's a total, I think they just didn't have the number right when they originally, it's like sixteen beds, sixteen beds, thirty beds. I don't know, but it's definitely a plan.
Got it, so it's just that we didn't get the total correct from the courts, maybe.
Yeah.
So the updated information that we got from Camille this month said that in January, OFM notified them that there was going to be a hundred, I think it was a hundred and seventy-six beds, it's on that one pager that, that they provided. So an additional hundred and sixty beds over the course of the next two years, is my understanding. So, and then we got feedback from Patrick about keeping it in-house and not working with OPD if that happens, and so.
So can, can I ask really quick, so are you talking about an additional facility? The extra hundred, the hundred and seventy-six beds that you're talking about?
I am not sure if they're talking about an additional facility, I just got the information on that ITA one pager update from the court.
Okay, I'll look at it, it's fine.
Yeah, but part of, part of the challenge here also is that the county is saying that they need a new courtroom to handle the hearings for this. And the county submitted a six-point-five-five million dollar capital budget request. I talked to Senator Bateman, and she said.
If I could interrupt, we didn't submit that, we were asked for it, there's a little bit of a difference. So when we had our legislative breakfast and Judge Thomas was here, she was talking about the impacts and the needs. Senator Bateman then engaged with Judge Thomas to say, how do we make this happen? Because she was expressing concern. There was two components, the ongoing staffing component, and then the, we're just out of space, we would need another facility. So we were asked quickly, well, what would that look like, what would you need? And our team would have needed several months to put together a really accurate cost, so they did a bit of a order of magnitude based on some old numbers with an inflator. And that's where we came to about a six, what was the total number, Josh?
Six-point-five-five.
Thank you. Yeah, six-point-five-five. So I appreciate the team doing that. That's what we submitted, because there was a lot of interest from Senator Bateman to say, let me see if I can get you the money.
Right.
And I appreciate Deb's being involved in that. A lot of it's been driven by Judge Thomas as well.
And so Senator Bateman has been working with Senator Trudeau, who is the lead Democrat in the Senate for the capital budget. I talked to Senator Bateman a week or so ago, and she said the six-point-five is just too much. The budget situation is just so bad. And so she said, could you do something with two million dollars? And so I talked to Leonard about that, and we've had some emails, and so, but she needs, she needs an answer this week in terms of, could you do, could you use two million dollars? And she said the only reason that we're thinking about something at that level of magnitude is because it's for ITA.
Is this, we're talking about a build-out at FJC of another courtroom? That wasn't six and a half million, that when we were first.
No.
So couldn't, I mean, I don't know, I can't, two million sounds probably what we were asked for by the court.
So, let's do a couple of things here. Judge Thomas has relayed that they are at capacity. They have courtrooms that are actually offices that are being used for courtrooms. We looked back at the two thousand fifteen, rough were, are the estimate that Central Services provided, that two thousand fifteen was the base, and then the Central Services team used all of that information, what we know about the building industry now, to come up with six-point-five-five million. So there was work done on this, but the county manager's point, it was requested very fast. Our folks did it very quickly, and so we wanted to make sure that the board, going forward, had information that was based on what Central Services provided. But we know that, we're not sure what the costs are, we haven't had the time to look at it, which is to the county manager's point. So we've got the six-point-five-five million, two million dollars to build out a new courtroom at FJC at the Family Juvenile Center. We know that that area is impacted with wetlands and other processes, hard to do some of the building in the first place. So just knowing that we want to be conservative in these conversations, and that having two million dollars is great, but setting expectations, not sure that that's going to get us what we need for a whole new courtroom.
Yeah, so I, I always want to pop in and say that, you know, I toured with Judge Thomas last week, and we reviewed, went over the facility, and, and two, you know, I would input here that two million is better than nothing, and that, that we would, that two million would be adequate enough to, she has kind of, you know, different plan, you know, different options. And one would be to transform the, there's one space where, that needs to be remodeled. And so I think that that two million could be, could be for those. And I also, you know, I also will just mention this, that, you know, with all of the incoming things coming from DSHS, the incoming beds, it's not, they're all not going to just show up next week or next year. What's really good about, I think, us being in the situation right now of them telling us that we're going to be, they're going to be bringing on new beds, will be that this, this discussion will continue with them all through next year. And by next year, we'll be able to come back and really hone in and say, you know, if you're going to be building out, you know, adding more cottages to Maple Lane, which is kind of what they're doing, they're adding, they're redoing the buildings one by one at Maple Lane, and they're adding beds, and they're adding beds, and that will take, it'll be like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine before, as those get implemented. And so we have a good opportunity with Joe, and Caroline, we've all had this kind of discussion with Joe Avalos around this. I wouldn't worry too much, because, you know, those beds aren't going to, one thing I know for sure is that the DSHS's beds don't come online very quickly. And so, you know, we, we, if we could get Judge Thomas the money to redo a courtroom, that would at least get us set up so then when the cottages come online in about a year and a half, then, you know, she'll be able to deal with the capacity.
Commissioner Grant, thank you for that, thank you for that new information. When we met with Judge Thomas previously, the, the expansion is what she was keying in on. So that's not information that we'd had up to this moment, so appreciate that input.
Yeah, you go for the moon.
Thank you, no, yeah, I, because I was going to ask, there's, in history, there's been two proposals, right? One has been the expansion, and then the other one has been the remodeling, I think of, I believe it was the prosecutor's space, and I'm looking at towards Commissioner Mester, yeah. Because that's the, and then that was the other one that we talked about, I think it was back in two thousand twenty-one, when they brought forward kind of that proposal to remodel. And so I was wanting to clarify, like, which track is it that, you know? And so I'm wondering with, as, as we're moving pieces, right? You know, I guess I'm, I'm asking, is the prosecutor's, like, planning to kind of move out of that space? Because, you know, they're all going to be housed under one space, and is that space going to be free, or?
To our knowledge, I think this is where it gets a little bit scattershot, if we're having different conversations, we got to pull it in.
Yeah, who's, who's, who's bird dogging this thing?
Because I think Judge Thomas is right to identify that space, but we have not, in our recent conversation with the prosecutor, they have not had any plans to vacate that space. In fact, they've communicated probably about six, maybe eight weeks ago, that they still wanted to have a presence there, and that was their space.
And so let me clarify, like, I'm not talking about like a plan, this was a plan proposed back in two thousand twenty-one. So this is not something that, you know, so that's why I was wondering, I was like, well, you know, maybe there's been some movement there, and there's going to be. This was something that the courts brought forward to the board back in two thousand twenty-one to kind of redo that space, because they needed an additional courtroom back, back then. And I think, you know, the discussion at the board level was like, well, then where is the prosecutor's office going to go? Like, how are we going to? And at that time, the clerk's office came back, and they're like, well, we need more space. And so there was just kind of divulged into something else. So I just wanted to ask that more from my knowledge of, is that the plan? Or is the prosecutor still going to maintain that space? And it sounds like you just said that they are going to still have a presence there, so that space is not technically available.
I think this, this information is relatively new about the.
No.
So when the Central Service team was responding to Judge Thomas's and Senator Bateman's request of, we need a new courtroom, the understanding we had from Judge Thomas was a, a new, complete, separate build-out. And so that's where we took some numbers from construction, we had inflators to get them a number, so that Senator Bateman could chew on that. We have no, we've had no discussions about how do we, how would we utilize that two million? And what does that mean for the current FJC and how space would move around? We would have to have a conversation with the stakeholders. And board members, you know how sensitive folks get about their space. So even this conversation right now, I want to just be clear that we have not approached any of the stakeholders and would have to really walk through how we would use that two million dollars.
So I'm just going to add one last little thing, is that I think that what's important here is that we think about the fact that this is just a budget exercise. That Jessica Bateman, we went to Jessica with six, I mean, oftentimes, especially right now, in the next couple of weeks on ledge, that, you know, we're going to have people shooting around numbers, and, and it's going to be, you know, we can't do the six million. Can, and she's saying, can we do the two million? And then we have to say yes or no. And, and, you know, so for me, it's, it's always about what can we get? And then we take that, and then, you know, we work, we work from there. I just would hate to have us go back and say to Jessica, no, we need more, we don't want anything at all. That would not be the case, if she can slip it in, cool.
Yeah, acknowledged, Commissioner, we just needed to know what we would be saying we would use it for.
We can't take it and then not produce, like, at least some kind of modified courtroom that would alleviate the need for ITA, I mean, we have to be sure we can deliver something.
That would be our concern.
Sure.
That would be our concern.
Yeah, we'll give her a call, I mean, give, give, I'm, Indu a call, she actually walked us into, it's actually a different area, so there's a courtroom that's, needs to be, that they want to remodel, that it's not the prosecutor's office. And so I, I would encourage you just to give Indu a call, and she probably can walk you through that pretty quickly.
I think that you're right about that, I was understanding that there was another propos, there was an alternative proposal that didn't take the prosecutor's space, but I haven't done the walkthrough to know exactly. I know that building when I was a lawyer, but I don't know exactly, I couldn't say exactly what they're talking about.
Shouldn't like Bruce or whoever go do that walkthrough and.
Yeah, we, we have to have that conversation, because when they engage, there wasn't a, hey, here's our, here's our preferred approach, but then we also have this other option that we can use as a backup, so we can have that conversation quickly.
Cool.
Yeah, she had a lot, she had like a whole wish list, she was like, and I wish I could do this, and I wish I could do this, but that, but, but, you know, let's, you know, just talk to them and then go from there.
Think I heard consensus that we would all like to be able to request that two million dollars, provided we can confirm through staff's effort that there is, there's a, there's a palatable use of the money that would deliver a product that would be.
We would, we would have to be able to deliver on it, that's what, that's the threshold, if we can deliver on it.
That's a condition to us being able to say that we want.
Then we would say yes.
My recommendation is that I go ahead and I let Senator Bateman know that, yes, the county would like, if we can only get two million.
Two-point-five.
I know, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Come on, maybe three.
I, I think we need a day or two to, for our Central Service team to touch base with the judge, because if you say yes, and we can't deliver on it.
We have, we have time, though, because we've got the draft.
We don't have to deliver on it, I mean, like, that, that's the thing, is like, yeah, we have plenty, I just want to jump in and say that. Like, we, we, they don't ride out exactly what we're going to do, they just slip it in to a proviso language, and then we worry about it later. It really isn't anything that we would have to deliver.
So if the board is fine with us saying yes without any expectation of delivery.
I want to hear Deborah's, complete that thought, please.
So, so we have time, so the, the proposed capital budget is coming out a week from Monday, is what I understand. But then, as I said, you know, they have to go back and forth, and they have to reconcile, and they're probably not going to vote on the final budget until the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, maybe longer if they go into special session. So we've got some time between this week and when they do the final budget to have those discussions. And if, and if you come back and say, can't do it, then we say, okay, take it out. But I would hate to not put it in.
At the end of the day, we end up with a contract with the state that says, we, you know, might say, we will construct a new courtroom, and if it says that, you have to construct a new courtroom. That doesn't mean you can go renovate an old broom closet. Like, you have to then go back for contract, you know, amendments, and like, you have to then get approvals to change scope of, of things, like, if you're, you know, like, there's rules.
It would be a, a, something with the Department of Commerce that we would have to work on, and so, but, but we haven't submitted that yet, so.
But we do have to deliver on what we're saying.
Yes.
We're going to take the money for, and so we do have to confirm that we can provide, we can do that.
But I, I'm saying, if it's possible, we have between today and the end of session to do that.
Yeah, so based on that, I think we should follow Deborah's lead, and we can pull, and we'll do the, we'll do the legwork, and we'll pull it back if it's not appropriate.
Great, we absolutely do that.
And the last thing I wanted to say to wrap up is, I'm still watching the operating budget to make sure that, that the judicial reimbursement is there, the state's impact, Thurston County courts, and the operating budget, that's two-point-two million dollars. And we, we've asked for a re-appropriation of the transportation dollars. Um, we, uh, we've asked for a re-appropriation of the transportation dollars for the Vale Road roundabout. Um, about five-point-eight million on that, and Representative Barkus is championing that one. I'm hearing good things about the forty-four million dollar proviso, the NCS proviso for forest and carbon sequestration, um, at least on, on the House side, so hoping to see that. And then, um, I'll let you know what Senator Bateman says.
Thank you.
Any other thing, questions for Deb? All right, perfect. We are way over time, and so we're gonna, I think we're at the end of the agenda, so we're adjourned. We're gonna be back at one P M for Commissioner's check-in.